Good everyone, and happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, June 4th. It is the month of June, shortly after the 10 o'clock hour here. And we're in the heart of O-Town Conyers, 901 Main Street in the Assembly Hall. And we're calling our meeting to order this morning. Absolutely. So this morning, we have a special recognition, Executive Director Rutledge, and the National Automotive Professional Week. We have a proclamation and a...
Yes, we do. And we have Director Hammer, and we have Deputy Director Swift here, and we have almost, I want to say, the entire Fleet Division.
Yes.
I don't think we're missing anyone.
So Commissioner Williams is signing, and we're going to allow Director Hammer to do the honors of actually reading this proclamation because Director Hammer is the Fleet Division that keeps us rolling in Rockdale County. Y'all go ahead and give him another round of applause. I just wanted to say my little two cents real quick. We can't get anywhere, go anywhere, respond to anything. Not a police car, not a fire truck, not any vehicle that the county owns and operates cannot deliver services without the support and the manpower of Fleet Services. Give them another round of applause.
See, I had a few words prepared, but you just said them. So I don't know what to say.
But you're the boss of Fleet Services. You're the director of this operation that oftentimes citizens just don't see. And when they think about county operations overall, some folks don't know that, yeah, we gotta have mechanics. We gotta have folks that making sure the vehicles are still running and that the fire truck makes it to its destination and the police car gets to the call and all of the above. But I yield to you.
Absolutely. We're sometimes the invisible department, as I like to say. When it's, when all is going well, you don't notice us. And we get calls when everything breaks, and that's kind of the issue. And I'm glad you mentioned that because they don't just change oil. You know, they work on parts, transmissions, engines. And it's not just the vehicles themselves. They're repairing lawn mowers. They're working on the heavy construction equipment. Even, like you said, the police cars, the SWAT vehicles. They have Humvee that's over there right at the moment that they're repairing, and the fire engines themselves. And that's a, that's a high level of technical expertise, all the way from, you know, changing oil and tires, all the way up to the intricacies of that. And that fire engine, it's a, it's a multi-year grueling training that they have to go through in order to be certified to work on those very specialty vehicles.
Yes, sir. Director, I want Deputy Director Swift to join you too because I call him Mr. Magic. Y'all give Mr. Magic a round of applause.
Do you want me to read the proclamation? Okay. All right. By the Board of Commissioners, a proclamation. Whereas the week of June 3rd to 9th, 2024, has been designated as National Automotive Professional Week, a time to honor and celebrate the dedicated professionals who play a pivotal role in ensuring the smooth operation of vehicle maintenance, fuel, and asset management. And whereas, the commitment of automotive professionals to meeting regulatory standards for emissions and safety is crucial for the well-being of our community and the environment. And whereas, the automotive professionals of Rockdale County are essential in maintaining the operational readiness and safety of the Rockdale County Sheriff's vehicles, fire trucks, and other vital county vehicles, including large equipment such as dump trucks, excavators used for construction projects. And whereas, each automotive professional's dedication, expertise, and hard work ensure that these vehicles and equipment are kept in optimal condition, thus safeguarding the efficiency of our county services and the safety of our residents. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to recognize and celebrate the efforts and contributions of each member of our esteemed team of automotive professionals. And I'll read their names. Ken Swift, Deputy Director, Angel Kush, Jose Urbina, Adam Lawson, Matthew McPhee, Charles Lyons, Franklin Daniel, Darrell Harden, Jerry Scott Taylor, Jeremy Johnson, and Carlos Kealan. Therefore... Therefore, we, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim June 3rd to 9th, 2024, in Rockdale County as National Automotive Professional Week. And witness whereof, we have here to set our hands and cause the official seal of Rockdale County to be affixed on this fourth day of June, 2024.
Let's give them another round of applause. Yes.
And I'm going to let Deputy Director Swift say a few words. I just want to make a quick comment that it was really important for me to be here, especially to thank these hard workers. They take care and concern every single day. They work in difficult circumstances, dirty circumstances, that a lot of us wouldn't want to do. I'm proud to serve on their team for what they do. And I'm actually even scheduled to be off today for my anniversary, but I talked to my wife and I said, "This is, this is really important." And she said, "Go." She said, "Go, and when you come back, we'll, we'll go out." So I just want to tell them how, how proud I am and how, how, like I said, how proud I am to be on their team for what they do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, Madam Commissioner, I just want to take a minute to express my gratitude for the men and women, or woman, that, that work in Fleet, since there's only one. Regardless of the, the heat or the cold, they are always on top of things, whether it's the car shop or the truck shop. Everybody in the county knows that when they roll in, my guys are always on top of taking care of someone to the best of their ability and, and going the extra mile. And I'm very grateful for it. And, and especially in the, in the office with Angel. She puts up with the rest of us other guys. And she's a saint for it, and she is the glue that holds us together. So we are, I, I'm very grateful for having an amazing division that I couldn't ask for a better, better set of people to work, work for the county, so.
Well, we're glad to have you and the team. And you're absolutely right. She's the glue. She's the anchor that holds the whole division down. Let's give them another round of applause. Absolutely. And before we move on, Commissioner Williams, I do want to yield to you because you've had the opportunity, you and Ms. Deidre, of course, you're in county vehicles from time to time, going to different training and conferences. And you've interacted with this team before. Talk about your experience and what you'd like to share this morning.
So I just really appreciate everything that you do. It's, it's nice to know that when you drive a county car, it's gonna work. That it's not gonna break down, that it's dependable, and that it's been serviced and kept up to date. And that means a lot to the employees that are driving the cars and for those of us who are writing in them sometimes. So I really appreciate all the work because it's, like you said, it's kind of behind the scenes, nobody notices, but it's crucial
Yes.
to what happens here in the county. So thank you so very much.
Well, in, in closing, I want to say this too because in the moment, this team is going back to work. But here's, here's, here's the thing that most people don't realize. When, when it's after 5 o'clock, when it's 11:00 PM, when it's the weekend, when it's the holiday, when something happens to one of our critical vehicles that have to service the community, who do you call? You call Fleet Services. And they give you guidance and direction, if not actually coming out to the scene of where you are because they have a, a vehicle that allows them also to come to where you are. There's been, I can recall many moons ago that I was traveling from a conference from Savannah back to Conyers. And I had a mechanical disruption with the vehicle. And the moment I called Fleet, I was given the right information as to who to call and where to go to because the first question was, "Chairman, are you okay?" The second question, "Where are you?" And I don't know how important that "where are you" was, but the soonest I gave my location, I was given instruction as to where to go and how soon someone would be there. And it was like an angel fell out of the sky on highway, on Interstate 16 and just showed up to do what needed to be done. And that's the kind of service, Madam Plurk, you need when you're in a situation and you're kind of in Boondock, Georgia. Y'all do know where Boondock, Georgia is, right? Kind of in between nowhere. And you need, you need some help. So give it up for Fleet Services. They do a fantastic job. Absolutely. Absolutely. To Director Hammer and Deputy Director Swift and all of you all who keep our wheels turning and rolling throughout Rockdale County, we do appreciate you and we appreciate the hard work you do to make, to maintain and keep up the maintenance of all of our equipment and, and vehicles throughout Rockdale County. Thank you so much.
I think we need to get a picture.
Yeah, we'd love to get a picture. I think public relations won't. If you can get everybody up front, that'd be great. Absolutely. You hold on. And we're gonna get, I tell you what, you hold on to it for right now because we gotta get Commissioner Washington to sign off on it.
So we should probably stand up.
All right, y'all give them another round of applause. Outstanding.
Happy anniversary.
Now get home to your wife. Director Hammer, absolutely. That's leadership there. That's making the sacrifice for your team to make sure that you prioritize those things that you deem important. And that's the kind of leadership we, we have all over the county, throughout our departments and divisions, making the call to do what needs to be done. All right, it's time to move forward now with the agenda review. Commissioner Williams, we're gonna review the agenda for June 11th, 2024, and we will start with item number eight.
We will start with, okay, so item 260 is with the Atlanta Regional Commission through the Parks and Recreation Senior Services Division. This is for the Multi-Service Aging Sub grant. The amount is $575,496.33, with a match of $40,132.30. The term is July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025.
So as I was reading through everything yesterday, I don't think people realize how much is being done with that grant and how many services are being provided to the citizens of Rockdale County. It's not just meals on wheels. It's homemaker services. It's people coming in and assisting the person and just all kinds of different things. I was really, I was surprised. I didn't realize so much was going on. But although I kind of knew that in the back of my head, but it was good to remember again that there's, there's a lot of services being done.
Well, and then you can't really quantify the personal interaction of staff that goes out to a senior's home and engages with that person. You talk about mental health all the time. Mental health, social engagement, just having that companionship of someone showing up. Some of these seniors are left to their own demise, so to speak. Some of them don't have family and people that are looking after them. So outside of the, the money. This makes a difference monetary-wise, but the, the engagement of mental health and just having someone come check on you makes a big, big difference when you're left to yourself. So you're absolutely right, Commissioner. Next item.
Item 261 is with Georgia Recreation and Parks Association through the Parks and Recreation Senior Services Division. This is for Art for the Ages Grant. The amount is $1,000. The term is April 1st, 2024, through July 31st, 2024. And this will be submitted for ratification. Item 262 is with Jalen Gilstrap and Friends through the Parks and Recreation Department. This is for Friday Wind Down at Costly Mill Park. The cost is $2,500. The date is August 2nd, 2024. Item 263 is with Grits and Jelly Butter through the Parks and Recreation Department for a band performance for the Summer Concert Series at Costly Mill Park. The cost is $3,000. The date is August 23rd, 2024. Item 264 is the Erica Dawson Exclusive through the Parks and Recreation Department for a band performance for the Summer Concert Series at Costly Mill Park. The amount is $4,500. The date is June 30th, 2024. Item 265 is with Joseph Longo through the Parks and Recreation Department for a band performance for the Summer Concert Series at Costly Mill Park. The amount is $3,500. The date is July 28th, 2024. Item 266 is with North America Fire Equipment Company, NAFCO, through the Fire Rescue Department. This is for fire personnel protective clothing. It's change order number three to Contract 2021-92. It's a unit cost increase to add a missed one-year term, to add a missed one-year term through June 21st, 2025. Item 267 is with the Georgia Department of Transportation through the RDOT Department. This is an intergovernmental agreement for traffic signal operations program coordination. The term is 10 years. Item 268 is with Snapping Shoals EMC through RDOT Department. This is for the government security light and conditions of service to install six streetlights for Morrison Road between Tucker Mill, Tucker Mill Road and Elks Amor. The amount is $143.40 per month. Item 269 is with Snapping Shoals EMC through the RDOT Department. This is for government security light to establish a streetlight district for Stafford Glen subdivision. The amount is $146.30 per month. Item 270 is a resolution providing for the installation of streetlights and the assessment of the annual cost of maintaining and operating said lights against abutting property. This is for the Stafford Glen subdivision. Item 271 is with Dell Marketing through the Technology Services Department. This is for Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. Change order number four to Contract 2020-72 for the enterprise update statement outlining Microsoft Office 365 license renewal at no cost and for a signature only. Item 272 is Just Foya Incorporated through MCCI. This is for the Technology Services Department to secure scanning and document repository for various county components. It's change order number one to Contract 2019-26 for updates and upgrades in the products and services. The amount is $10,500. It's for three years, then auto-renews year to year. And this is host-funded. Item 273 is for Catalyst Courts and Land Records LLC, formerly known as Icon Software. This is through the Clerk of Court's Office. For jury management software, this is change order number two to Contract 2020-95. It's a renewal of five-year term. The amount is $115,956.52. This is a five-year cost. The term is July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2029. Item 274 is with Savvy Solutions PBC through the Talent Management Department for public promise insurance program to aid employees in navigating student loan forgiveness through the education and advocacy. The amount is $70 per enrollee. The term is June 1st, 2024, through May 31st, 2026.
Well, that's not, yeah. 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 Absolutely. That's a big deal there. Executive Director Holmes got up almost like an old-school Jack-in-the-Box. He just pumped up.
Good morning, Chairman, Madam Commissioner. So yes, we are super excited about this program. It's a partnership with NACO. And what it does is a two-year contract, as we just stated. But I want to just kind of read some of the benefits to this. It definitely, it aims to aid Rockdale employees in navigating student loan forgiveness through education and advocacy. The program utilizes the Savvy platform. It's a unique tool to help student loan borrowers better understand their debt, optimize repayment options, and enroll in the best plan for their financial needs. The platform allows employees to automatically sync loan accounts to determine eligibility for student debt. It will look at and analyze over 150-plus forgiveness programs for our students. And then it automates the application paperwork and tracking process for our employees. So statistically, at least 30% of the employees here in Rockdale County carry student loan debt. We do understand the importance of what that means and also being able to navigate through that paperwork on your own. This program, in conjunction with our educational assistance program, tuition reimbursement, this allows our employees to have someone that's gonna advocate, educate, as well as help them through that process. So it's a great program. We're excited to be able to offer it. And for those employees that want to participate, they will have the option to join. So it's a one-year subscription for them. They have to renew it every single year. But one of the benefits in terms of working in the public sector is that our employees are eligible for student loan forgiveness. So this actually helps them navigate through that process.
So I'm so glad to hear this. We often are challenged in the public sector against the private industry because we're not able to give bonuses or incentives the way they can at Coca-Cola or Home Depot or some of the bigger companies because we're government. We're not able to do that. So we have to search for every opportunity that we can incentivize to be able to, number one, attract people, talent, and to retain talent. So we, and I'll tell you, this really became challenging at the height of the pandemic and post-pandemic because there was a big shift in our employment. We'd lost a good number of people. Some folks got comfortable sitting on the couch and sheltering in place, and they're probably still sheltering in place. Some folks just didn't want to leave the confines of home because they enjoyed the remote work. Well, government is different. We are a service-driven industry. You have to come to work. So, but we compete. And it's very competitive when you're dealing with the private sector because they can offer more money, they can give different kinds of incentive, incentives and bonuses. We're limited to what we can do. And even in the government world, the word bonus is really not a safe, friendly kind of word. We've seen over the last few years, particularly in the area of public safety. They're really competing. One agency is competing against the other to try to attract public safety professionals. And they have hiring bonuses and all kinds of different things to try to get the lure in talent. But then what about all of the other service delivery providers that run a city government or a county government? It's very, very difficult. So we've done a few things. We tweaked it a little bit to be able to incentivize folks to come to Rockdale County and to, to stay in Rockdale County as well. And again, it begins, it becomes challenging more and more and more because you gotta have qualified, competent talent that can get out here and do the job of servicing our community. And, and at the same time, people gotta take care of their families. So they're looking at what the second smallest geographical county in the state of Georgia is paying against some of the big boys in the region. And if they have to drive 30 minutes, sometimes even an hour, to get a little bit more bacon on the table, that's what they're gonna do. So every time we have opportunities like this, and I'm taking a moment because I think it's important, Commissioner Williams, that our employees understand that we are advocating for their best interests and we're looking for every opportunity that we can possibly get ahold of that will enhance their quality of life and give them more of the reason to make the decision to stay in Rockdale County. And then when we do have those vacancies, making sure that we can have a, an attractive portfolio or an offering package to lure the right folks in here that are a right fit for us. So I wanted to make sure, I pointed that out because this one is one that we certainly don't want to glaze over. It's very, very important. And hats off to Executive Director Holmes, your leadership and your team because I really would put our Talent Management Department up against any, whether they call it personnel or still calling it HR or not. We've got one, we've got a stellar operation. Y'all give them a round of applause. The leadership, the talent management makes a big difference for the employees of Rockdale County. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Executive Director Rutledge. We needed to pause. We need to take that pause for that particular cause. Absolutely. Next item, please.
Great. Item 275 is with the Georgia Department of Transportation through the Water Resources Department for Standard Utility Agreement Contract Item Agreement for the I-20 at SR-138 interchange improvements for water and sewer relocations. The estimated amount is $2 million.
And very quickly, while we're on the whole deal of transportation, I want to clear something up and make some folks aware. So there are a few state routes or state-maintained roads in Rockdale County that sometimes, or oftentimes, are confusing to, to the general public about what's a county road and what's a state road. State Route Highway 138 comes under the authority of the Georgia Department of Transportation. So does Highway 20. So does Highway 162, which is Salem Road. And so does State Route 212. All of those are state-maintained roads by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Although they... Although they run right through Rockdale County, those roads are maintained, for the most part, by the Georgia Department of Transportation. And a quick update on what's happening down on State Route Highway 162, which is Salem Road. For so long, they've been talking about widening that road from Rockdale County into Newton County. Well, it's happening. If you've been down Salem Road in the last 90 days, you've seen some of the businesses along the right-of-way that the state has acquired, and the state is moving forward with that project. When it will be completed, I don't know that answer. We've been waiting for them to get started. But guess where you can go to find that answer? The Georgia Department of Transportation has a wonderful website that is user-friendly, and they will give you all of that information, and you can contact either your state representative or your state senator. Those are the folks who engage with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Now, we are excited of all the work that they're doing in Rockdale County because it's going to have a direct impact on what's happening here, mobility and traffic, economic development, and quality of life. The whole landscape of State Route 162, Salem Road, is going to completely change once this project is completed. If you happen to live on Salem Road or know someone that lives there or work in that area, they will tell you the frustrations of the top of the morning at rush hour, late afternoon at rush hour, and particularly when school is in session, having to deal with the thoroughfare and the tightness of a two-lane road that enters from Rockdale into Newton County. So, we're excited about it, but I thought I'd just give that little tidbit of information and update. Also, in that same spirit, State Route 138, even as it changes into State Route 20 down near the Publix and the Target, that's the state route, both 138 and Highway 20. Let me just say this because we get a lot, I get a lot of text messages. We've been having a lot of rain, and what happens is the grass-cutting crew who's responsible, their schedules get thrown off when there's an abundance of rain. So, guess what they have to do? Have to wait until it rains, until it dries, and then they get back on schedule to come out and cut State Route 20 and State Route 138. And that also applies for the north side of State Route Highway 138 as well because people often, they'll text or they'll email and say, "Y'all need to get out and cut the grass and blah, blah, blah." Well, have you noticed it's been raining a lot and that the lawnmower really has to wait until it dries out and then get back on schedule? So, we ask that you please be patient with the contractors of the Georgia Department of Transportation, and one local company who does a fantastic job is ProCutters. But guess what? They can't ride the lawnmower in the rain. We have to wait. So, please be patient. A lot of times, folks be really emotional, and they don't really understand. There is a process. We're paying attention, but I thought I'd take the liberty of Director Kelly and just kind of give that little nugget of information. And just like in your front yard, CFO areas are, you got to wait until it dries out before you can run the lawnmower, or you're going to have a hot mess. Absolutely. Next item, please.
Item 276 is a requisition through the Technology Service Department for DYSIS Solution. This is for four Cisco Firewalls for the E911. The amount is $18,631.76.
And Director Morgan, I know your time is winding up, perhaps winding down. But I want to ask that you and Deputy Director Barnum, because we're trying to educate folks. Before you depart complete, between you and Deputy Director Barnum, with public relations, I want the public to see the inside of what I call that dungeon of 911. I want folks to see the before and after because if they realize where our 911 dispatchers and operators are working in, the conditions that they're in, I think it's important because sometimes people can't celebrate what's coming because they forgot where they came from. And I think we need, in terms of taking care of our employees, but also responding and servicing the needs of our citizens, folks need to really see that we've been operating out of a shack, a dungeon, for a long, long time nestled in. You don't have to give them the sensitive part of those photos, but give them the part that they need to get a clear idea and an understanding. And then show them that new, I'm almost going to call it a sanctuary. Show them that new sanctuary of freedom. Y'all have windows now. You can see the outside. You can actually see that it's raining. You can hear the birds chirping, all of that. So, I think in the spirit of education, Executive Director Mims and Director Morgan, y'all collaborate. Get us some pictures, some photos, some video. Just graphic tells the story.
And it will be a drastic story.
And let's tell it before you leave out. Thank you so much. Yes, indeed. I just think folks, they don't really know until they actually see what's really going. We've come a long way in Rockdale County. Absolutely. Next item, please.
All right. Item 277 is a requisition through Fire Rescue. This is American Safety and Fire Hose for the HGAC by contract. The Fairhaven Group LLC doing business as American Safety and Firehouse. This is for the SCUBA and cylinders needed for two Quint trucks and one rescue pumper. The estimated arrival of the trucks is March 2025. The amount is $122,803.32.
Woo! Now, these vehicles here, this apparatus is long overdue in Rockdale County because I think some folks forget that we have some thick, bushy wooded areas, rural areas still in Rockdale County. You've got to have the right equipment that can get up in there and be able to respond. And this is a perfect segue right here. Chief, come on up because I don't know how you and Director Hammer, Dominic, I don't know how you all were able to get, the fire station on 138 North is just about complete. Y'all are way ahead of schedule. Tell us, give us an update, Chief.
We are super excited about that. Talking with Deputy Director Villano, we're looking at June 24th as it being released to us.
Wow.
So, we are preparing for a grand opening ceremony, probably end of the month, right at the 1st of July. So, very excited about that. But, Mr. Chairman, I would like to just point out what we're talking about right now is the SCBA, the Breathing Apparatus, but looking at the two Quint trucks that we're getting, I want to talk about those because that's two-in-one. That provides your water and your ladders. Where our engine alone is roughly right at a million. A truck alone is much more than that. We're getting a Quint. We're getting a truck, two trucks, that do both jobs.
Okay.
At a price of about $700-some thousand dollars apiece. So, you talk about money and savings. That is a huge saving for a very well-needed product that we'll be having coming in. So, just wanted to point that out.
Well, I'm so glad. I want to get the Deputy Director to come on up because he often talks about no one gets anything done by themselves. It's been General Services and Fire and Rescue who've worked together in this project. Deputy Director, tell us from your perspective, I mean, we're excited about what the chief is announcing, but it's y'all's leadership of your team who's been working with the whole construction of this project. And I, you know, I don't want to be biased, but this is one of the best-looking fire stations I've seen in a long time. That brick and that red, it just really smokes a statement on the northern district of Rockdale County. Tell us about this progress of this fire station.
Oh, yes. It's a beautiful site. When we drive by there, go to visit the site, the grass is coming in fully, some nice turf around the building. Kevin Price Construction's done a wonderful job getting this building done and completed on and before deadlines. So, that's always a good thing. We're trying now scheduling with Chief Mack a date so we can have a grand opening, and our project team has done remarkable job to keep it under budget, which has been phenomenal for them.
Very good. Well, listen, Chief Mack, Deputy Director Villano, y'all keep up the good work. We're excited. The folks in the northern district of Rockdale County are super excited. They finally, finally have a fire station, fire station number 10 on the northern district of Rockdale County. And as they take their seat, let me just say this. One of the things about having a new fire station is really not just the fire station itself because what we've done in Rockdale County, we've created community fire stations like what you remember back in the day where the young people in the community can go and engage with our firefighters and learn about fire service. But the other thing that I like, and this is going to be a plus for the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office, because typically you have deputies per shift that hang out at the fire station because it's a great place to do a report, write a report if you need to go and refresh yourself. It's a great location for them to refresh themselves, and having those sheriff's deputy cars stationed out at the fire station as well, it gives them kind of a point of huddle. When you think about that on the northern side of the county, they don't really have that, but the fire station will provide that as well, and it gives a better collaboration between the fire service and the sheriff's office, but giving that law enforcement and public safety entity a place to kind of hub and huddle a little bit. So, that's going to create a presence, and people like residents, citizens, taxpayers, like knowing that the police is just up the street and around the corner, probably parked at the fire station, and if there's a need, he's only moments or seconds away to be able to respond. So, we're getting a two-for-one right there by having fire station number 10. Oftentimes, as I'm moving through out the county, I see sheriff's deputy cars or police department cars parked at the fire station for whatever reason. Now, it's a known factor that you can find some really good food at the fire station. So, I don't know if, I don't know whether the deputies are writing reports or they partaking with, do a little bit of both. Okay? Absolutely. All right. Very good. Good news there. Next item.
All right. Item 278 is an expenditure request for PayScale Incorporated through the Talent Management Department for Insight Lab Catalyze Annual Subscription. The amount is $29,450. Item 279 is rezoning case 2024-03. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 1079 Southwest Johnson Road from C2 General Commercial to RM Residential Multifamily to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading. Item 280 is rezoning case 2024-08. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 1955 Flat Shoals Road from R1 Single Family Residential District to C1 Local Commercial District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading. And item 281 is a requisition to the Sheriff's Office for McCracken Automotive LLC doing business as Brannon for five 2024 Chevrolet Silverado PBs. The amount is $275,000, and this is sploshed funded.
All right. Okay. Well, that moves us right on over to public comment.
So, I have not received any red cards from anybody who might want to speak this morning?
So, that moves us right on over to board comment, and I'll start with you, Dr. Williams.
Okay. Couple of things that have happened in the last couple of weeks. We had an opioid fund software management meeting that was very interesting in terms of being able to manage the opioid funds that we're receiving and looking at grants and how best to use that money. And we'll hear more about that next week when we have a presentation. But the meeting was held out at the new E911 Center, and so we were able to get a tour of that building, which I haven't been out to the dungeon since I was first elected, but I do remember what it looks like. And this one is just state-of-the-art. It's really, really nice. It's going to really upgrade the conditions for our employees, which all of that means that we have better services.
Yes.
And so, that was really interesting. Also, this is, let me pull up my email. Okay. June is National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. And according to the Alzheimer's Association, this is an opportunity in June to hold a conversation about the brain and share the facts that Alzheimer's disease and other dementia are a public health issue. We have a small video that they're going to show.
Okay.
And this video is a couple of minutes, but it gives information about how to protect your brain, how to prevent it. There's no, they really don't know where Alzheimer's or dementia starts or how it's, you know, where it's come from, and they really don't know how to prevent it, but there are some medications for treatment, and there are some general suggestions, so.
Okay.
Dementia is a general term that describes the loss of the ability to think, remember, and reason. People with dementia have difficulty completing everyday activities, and symptoms worsen over time. Dementia happens when nerve cells in the brain stop working properly. There are many types of dementia. Some types include Alzheimer's disease, frontotemporal dementia, gliboid body dementia, and vascular dementia. Some people may have changes in their brain caused by more than one type of dementia. The risk of developing dementia increases as individuals grow older. Most people with dementia are age 65 or older, and research shows that about one in three people age 85 or older in the United States may have some form of dementia. Still, dementia is not a normal part of aging. Not everyone develops it as they grow older. Scientists are working to discover why some individuals develop dementia and others don't. While healthy lifestyle approaches, such as regular exercise, may help some people reduce their risk of developing dementia, more research is needed. Dementia can cause problems with thinking, memory, and behavior. Some people may also have trouble controlling their emotions and may experience changes in their personality and movements. Symptoms can vary depending on the type of dementia. The common signs include difficulty understanding or expressing thoughts, memory loss and confusion, getting lost in a familiar place, trouble handling money, or losing balance. However, these symptoms don't always mean someone has dementia. Dementia-like symptoms may be caused by depression, side effects from medication, vitamin deficiencies, or other medical conditions. Talk with your doctor if you have concerns about your ability to clearly think, learn, or remember, or if you notice changes in your personality or movements. Doctors can help determine whether your symptoms are caused by dementia or another health condition. If you do have dementia, obtaining an early and accurate diagnosis can help you manage the disease through potential treatment options and help you plan for the future. Learn more at Alzheimer's.gov.
So, a couple of things I wanted to emphasize. One, it is not a normal part of aging, although it's common, but it's not, you know, it means there's something going on with the brain. And also, the other thing I think is that just because you have symptoms similar to those of dementia doesn't mean it's dementia causing those symptoms, that there can be other reasons for that. So, I think there's a lot, and here you go, making healthy lifestyle choices may reduce your risk. They don't really know, and up in that right-hand corner, it says, "We don't know for certain yet." What, if anything, can prevent it, but there may be things you can take to help reduce your risk. Controlling your high blood pressure, sleeping well, eating a healthy diet, keep physically active and in connection with family and friends. And aren't those the same kinds of things that... And aren't those the same kinds of things that we talk about with mental health issues, with physical health issues? You know, those basic things can make a difference, um, in how perhaps reducing our risk of many different things, including dementia, but, um, keeping ourselves happy. That connection with family and friends is really key also, as well as those physical things. Um, I just, you know, a friend of mine who I've taught with, we actually were on a team, a middle school team together, um, passed away two weeks ago, uh, with, from Alzheimer's. I hadn't seen her in probably ten years, but even then, I remember thinking something was not quite the same. She was, she was sharp, she was smart, she was funny, but the conversation we had was very elementary. And, um, and then, of course, uh, you know, she became, she was diagnosed with Alzheimer's, and that has, that slowly took her away from all of her good friends and family. But, um, so, you know, there, there's nothing, it, it cuts across all socioeconomic status, educational status, races, you know, ethnic groups. It, it, it affects everybody, and we know from our, um, the two focus groups that we've had already in, here in Rockdale, that, um, there is a need for some more programming. And we, so we have been working with, uh, Deputy Director Morgan from the Senior Services, um, on what we can actually do to provide more services. Some, you know, some counties actually have the Office of Aging or, you know, that kind of thing. A, all of our services are right under our Senior Services, in, included in Parks and Recreation. So, you know, it's, um, it's something to be aware of, it's something to maybe step in if you see somebody having trouble at the grocery store figuring out what they need. Maybe they just, maybe they just need a little assistance. And it's okay to step in and say, you know, do, did you need some help with that? Maybe they do, maybe they don't, but it doesn't hurt to ask. So, you know, those, anytime we can focus on our physical, mental health, we have a more vibrant community and, um, a more well-rounded community. And I really appreciate what Parks and Recreation does because those, they provide a lot of opportunities for connection with family and friends.
Absolutely.
Lot of events and activities to keep people involved and keep your, keep your brain working and moving, and, and that intellectual stimulation is key. So anyway, June is National Alzheimer's and Dementia Awareness Month. Purple is the color, I wore purple today.
Beautiful color.
So, um, we'll be talking more about it as the, as the month goes on. That's, that's all of my, that's all I have.
All right, very well. All right, Commissioner. Um, I think I'm going to move forward now to Executive Director Rutledge.
All right, I have a couple of things this morning. Um, so I know that the Chair doesn't usually talk about himself this, all that much, but I'm going to. So Chairman Osnesbit has been appointed for the second year to chair the ACCG, which is the Association County Commissioners of Georgia Federal Policy Committee. That is a huge appointment because they work on behalf of all hundred and fifty-nine counties in the state of Georgia to help develop policy and legislation that affects counties. So I think that deserves a round of applause. And also, I have one more thing while I'm at it. Uh, we also have, we are blessed here in the county to have so many people who, who just do their work and do their job every day and don't say much about it. So I'm going to talk for a minute about Chief Sue Sanders. Today is her twenty-third year with Rockdale County. I mean, I don't even have to say how much she does for this county and how long she has been here. I think you've had every position, I mean, every department. I know there was at least one time she had more than half of the county, right?
That's right, that's right.
I just think that that could not go without being mentioned. I know we normally hit the five-year increments, but twenty-three years? That's a long time.
Yes, yes. Well, thank you, um, Executive Director Rutledge. Um, it's, it's an honor to serve the citizens of Rockdale County, particularly from, um, a regional and a statewide, international capacity. Um, I think it's important that citizens know that, um, they have not only a seat at the table, uh, in the region, in the state, and on the national level, that Rockdale County, the smallest county geographically in the state of Georgia, is, is, is clearly represented all across the region, the state of Georgia, and in the nation. Um, so being able to have that voice to make certain that we bring home the bacon and that, uh, we don't get left behind, because oftentimes when you are a smaller county or community, uh, it's hard to get in the room. And if you can get in the room, if you can find a seat at the table, but not only are we in the room, they know that Rockdale County is present and accounted for, and that we have been, uh, very resourceful for bringing the deliverables, bringing them home to Rockdale County. Uh, we announced, uh, March twenty-eighth, I think it was, at the State of the County address, uh, multiple, uh, receipts that we have been able to partner with our, uh, state and federal partners. So, no, I don't talk a lot about, uh, because it's, you know, again, this is not a job for me, uh, this is my ministry. I, I believe that I've been called to do this work. You do have to have, Commissioner Williams and I was talking about at the beginning of the meeting, you do have to have thick skin. Uh, you, I also say you gotta have, you gotta be a little two percent, I'm about two percent crazy to be able to do this job, because some time ago I put my name on the ballot, and you gotta be able to deal with the punches and the darts and all of that. So this is not my first rodeo. You gotta be able to do this, and it's part of it, but thank you for acknowledging the service that we provide on behalf of all of the citizens in Rockdale County. Then Chief Sanders, my, give her another round of applause. You know, I, I, when I think about several of you all, and Chief is one of those individuals, you're absolutely right, Executive Director Rutledge, that she has a story within herself, and I always, uh, try to encourage the Chief when we're talking to, um, our employees, particularly, um, some of our most recent employees, let's just say five years or less, uh, because I like for her to share her start and share that she had a very, very, very humble start, uh, in Rockdale County government, and was able to matriculate over the years to the role of the Chief Operating Officer of Rockdale County. Um, and, and I think it's promising when people hear her story, particularly our new employees or relatively young employees, because people know that there's opportunities. You can expire, you can grow here in Rockdale County. And, and through, uh, what we've done with talent management in twenty seventeen and now, we've been able to promote and show shining examples of people at different levels of this organization can matriculate, can grow, and be a part of the top level of leadership here in Rockdale County. And you're right, she's had just about every position. Uh, Chief, let's yield to you, let's hear from you, twenty-three years, uh, give us a little bit of, of your experience here in Rockdale County.
Um, it's an honor to serve Rockdale County, the citizens and the employees. And when I started, you're right, I was, I started with Rockdale Water Resources. So started as an administrative manager, um, over on Portman Drive, and actually moved into this building when it was newly renovated and already full then. Um, but, uh, it's been an honor, and I have actually taken advantage of the tuition program here, um, to get my degree, so I'm really excited about the student loan program because I still have some of my own. So, you know, it's great when, um, you see a county that will invest in you. So, uh, Rockdale County has definitely invested in me, and, and I hope that I have, um, served it well. So, thank you.
Well, you have served us well. Give her another round of applause. Executive Director Rutledge is, I don't know why I feel like I'm old. Well, you know what, yes, I knew it was something, Commissioner. So, uh, here we are, today is June fourth, we're in the month of June, and we do this in a different way sometimes through talent management. They, they're the people department, they take care of the people, but I want to just take the liberty to highlight at least a couple of our employees. There may be some that I don't know, but, uh, Executive Director Will Barkley is celebrating a birthday this month, and so is Director Kelly. Give it up for the June birthdays. That's right. Absolutely. There's a few babies born in the summertime, absolutely. But we are certainly, uh, proud of the service of Executive Director Barkley and Director Kelly, uh, they do some phenomenal work, and we like to, um, pay tribute to them during this month. And there may be others, uh, employees in the month of June that I'm not, uh, familiar with, uh, as well. Uh, and, and then, uh, before I close out our meeting, I want to, uh, Chief, you had an announcement, another announcement you wanted to make as well, is that right?
Yes, so, um, speaking of hard work and dedication, um, our Public Relations Department, um, this year has won six of the Telly Awards, and Executive Director Menz can tell you a little more about that. So they are for, um, Hoops After Dark, uh, Reim- Reimagine Rockdale Video while they're getting it up, um, Reimagine Rockdale Promo Video, Rockin' Women Video.
Okay.
Okay, there we go.
Wow.
So this is a, this is, these are nationwide awards. They are, um, just so everyone knows that, and out of twelve thousand entries, we had six awards. So last year, to put it in perspective, we received only one, so this year, I mean, it's about positive storytelling that affects change. So I think, um, Public Relations deserves hats off, the whole team, so again, kudos to them.
Yes, yes, very good. Chief, I like, uh, you said positive storytelling, I like that. When you talk about branding and the image of our community, Ms. Chester, when we talk about Reimagine Rockdale, it's all about positive storytelling. And I think every citizen, every taxpayer can be a part of positive storytelling about our community, because we're talking about who we are, the image, the brand, the look of who we are, that makes a big, big difference. Then, uh, I'm not surprised about Public Relations. Did y'all hear that class act music as they were giving the, it sounded like we were at the Grammys or somewhere at the Oscars, and it, that was just, Jeannetta, can y'all play that again? I'm just going to break the rules here. Play, play that again, I want, it, it just takes you back there. This is the reason why we have an award-winning, let, let it play. Give him another round of applause. You know, Madam Clerk, I believe that, um, leadership is about leading your community, but it's also about developing a sense of pride in the people that live in your community. It's about being able to have a little bit of bragging rights about where you live, that feel good about, yes, I'm straight out of Rockdale, absolutely, and feeling good about the community and loving on the community and being able to, uh, instill that into our young people, our senior citizens, and all of those folks that make a difference. That's why for me, I say it's, it's not a job, it's a calling. Um, have we omitted anything else? All right, so I asked a question, Executive Director Rutledge, is there any need for executive session this morning?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, happy Tuesday, be safe, school is out, slow down in the neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Have a great day, this meeting is adjourned.